Good evening and welcome to the August 19th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Mary Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Tom Kendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, bless this community and watch over it to make sure things stay safe, especially as we start back to school for our kids and kids will be walking to school and riding bikes and on buses. So, we hope everyone is cognizant and careful when it comes to the children. Be with those who are protecting us around the world. May they be safe and have your spirit over them. Bless our first responders, keep them safe, our police and our fire, and be with everyone here tonight and bless, as I said before, this whole community. Thank you and God bless. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes, here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Motion to excuse Mr. Heath.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
Mr. Titterington, I believe you have an introduction to make tonight.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Lauren, if you could stand up, please. I'd like to introduce you all to Lauren Karch. Lauren started last Monday as our Communications Coordinator. Lauren comes to us from Miami County where she was the Solid Waste Coordinator. So, she coordinated that program which included all of the education and outreach activities, generating the enthusiasm especially for recycling in Miami County. She has a bachelor's degree in, she has, I guess, two bachelor's degrees, Public Administration and Journalism. She also has an MBA. She comes to us with a lot of experience in marketing and communications. She's done a lot with social media coordination, website administration. She'll help us with our website as we redevelop it and freshen that up, as well as brand management. What we will want to have Lauren doing a lot of is to be distributing the city information on our social media, as well as other avenues, some of the paper, digital, social media, et cetera, those kind of sources. She'll be working with our media sources, both local and regional news outlets, and she will be coordinating information between and among our departments and, of course, our citizens. So, please join me in welcoming Lauren to the city family.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes from August 5th, 2019 meeting.
Minutes of Council, August 5, 2019. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that ordinance number 025-2019, a rezoning, be adopted. Committee recommended that the boundary of Community Reinvestment Area 1 be established to be the same as a DRO overlay district, and also recommended that a fee be established, a one-time fee related to a CRA application. Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing purchase of property at 110 East Canal for new fire station 1. This was discussed. Law and Ordinance Committee reported regarding the notice of a liquor license for a permit at Studio 14. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls for an event on October 11. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to, again, participate in ODOT's Bridge Inspection Program. Resolution number R35-2019, Bridge Inspection Program Participation, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R36-2019, Amending CRA Guidelines and the Boundary of the Community Reinvestment Area 1, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R37-2019, Related to Various Fees to Establish the CRA Application, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 025-2019, A Rezoning Off of Dorset Road, was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number 028-2019, Purchase of Real Estate for Municipal Use, first reading. It was discussed and adopted. Ordinance number 029-2019, Agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls for Event, October 11th, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 030-2019, Intention to Levy Tax Related to Funding for Park and Recreation Purpose, was given first reading and was discussed and adopted. Following various comments, there was a presentation regarding the 2020 census, then Council adjourned at 8:20 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes, is ready.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Our first committee report this evening is from Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. William Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. On August 16th, 2019, this committee met to review the recommended revisions regarding the Community Reinvestment Area, or CRA, Number 2, included amending the criteria, amending the boundary of the CRA Number 2 to be the corporate boundary of the city of Troy, accepting the area of the boundary that has been established for CRA Number 1, and amending the criteria for abatement on new investments within CRA Number 2, should make the program more attractive to property owners as those owners are considering making property improvements. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend the boundary of CRA Number 2, to include the area of the corporate boundary of the city of Troy, with the exception of the area of the boundary that has been established already for CRA Number 1. Amend the criteria for applications within the CRA Number 2 in accordance with the attached Exhibit A. And that was respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from Council?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Swazer?
This can have some far-reaching effects for the residents of Troy as far as an incentive goes for improving their homes. I was wondering if Mr. Titterington could explain kind of what this really means to the citizens here.
So, CRA is Community Reinvestment Area, and as Mr. Twist mentioned, CRA 2 is everything but that would, the downtown, CRA 1, or the Downtown Reinvestment Overlay District, which means that any property within the boundaries of CRA 2 would be eligible for certain incentives whereby if minimum amount of investment is made in remodeling, revitalizing, repairing properties, and there's a long list of eligible items from roofing and HVACs and exterior improvements and such, that the enhanced value on the property that would otherwise be taxed, so let's say you have a property that's worth $100,000, you make repairs or you make renovations, and now the property is worth $125,000, you would be taxed additionally on that $25,000 because you made those repairs. If you are eligible and you apply and are certified as a CRA project, you could be abated and not have to pay the taxes on that additional $25,000 in value for a period of time that is laid out in the chart, Exhibit A, of the report that's in your packet. It all depends on the age of, in the case of a residential project, the age of the structure, the types of repairs, the amount of the investment that's made, as well as the number of dwelling units, if it's a single-family versus a multifamily, there are different thresholds for the minimums on what you need to invest. But you can realize some tax credits, if you will, for a period of time, anywhere from four to 10 years, depending on the age of the property, with this program.
Can somebody who is in the boundaries of CRA 1 still use this?
They're very similar, they're very similar requirements, they're slightly different requirements in CRA 1 versus CRA 2 because that's the Downtown Overlay District, but they are otherwise very similar. I don't have a comparison for you on what exactly is different, but there are not very many differences that would impact somebody who has a structure that's 30 or 40 years old and wants to do renovations to.
Would they still be charged the application fee that they do in CRA 1?
They are, it's all the same application fee regardless of which area you're in.
So, there's an application fee no matter what?
Yes, but it's a one-time.
But is it the same as what we charge in CRA 1?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question. Thank you, Madam President. As the boundaries of the city grow, does the CRA automatically grow as well, or will we have to amend those boundaries at a later time?
Our understanding is from talking to Council, that those boundaries would automatically grow, and so there was no need to add any specific line.
No, it wouldn't. There was a concern, there was a concern that that would expand the boundaries, and you can only, to keep it a pre-1994 CRA, anytime you expand it, that could be considered an amendment that, so it does not automatically capture annexed territories. So, anything annexed from this point forward? Is not in the CRA. Is not in the CRA. Would we have another amendment available to change those boundaries?
I'm sorry?
Do we have another amendment available to change those boundaries?
Yes, yes. We have-
That would all be new construction, and that doesn't, CRA 2 doesn't apply?
Not necessarily, no. If there's structures as part of an annexation, they could still qualify, I guess, if we do an amendment. We, if you recall, we do have three other CRA districts that are laying dormant, so we do have some flexibility if we wanted to make amendments in the future.
Any other questions?
One question, Madam President.
Yes.
I thought there was a cap on how many amendments you could do.
There are per CRA area.
Oh, okay.
You can do two, I mean, you can do as many amendments as you want, but once you do two, then you're no longer grandfathered as a pre-1994 CRA, and then the newer requirements come into play. But if you want to remain under the old requirements, it's two amendments or less.
And this is why we need a law director. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Do you have anything further, Mr. Twist?
No.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have an oral report here tonight. The city of Troy has previously stated its vigorous opposition to the state legislator's actions to establish centralized income tax collections, noting that centralized collections will have a negative impact on city of Troy revenues and the ability of the city to fund operational and capital expenditures. The Ohio Supreme Court will soon hear an appeal filed by over 160 municipalities that the legislature's action are unconstitutional under the Home Rule Amendment and violate municipal property rights. The Ohio Municipal League is filling in amicus brief in support of the appeal of the municipal coalition and has asked that interested municipalities notify the league in support of the amicus brief. This committee believes that Troy should be included in the municipalities supporting the action of the Ohio Municipal League and asks that a letter of support be sent to the Ohio Municipal League. Therefore, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the oral report of the Finance Committee be accepted regarding centralized income tax collections and that a letter be sent to the Ohio Municipal League that the city of Troy requests to be included in the municipalities supporting the action of the Ohio Municipal League related to opposition to the centralized income tax collections.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Severt on the, to send a letter to the Ohio Municipal League. Is there any discussion or questions from Council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
The Law and Ordinance Committee and Mr. Swazer has our next report.
Yes, Madam President. This committee met on August 16th, 2019 to consider a request for support of a Trex liquor permit application of SNG Stores LLC for their marathon station at 801 West Main Street for a C1 permit, which is beer in original sealed containers for carryout only. This committee concurs that this should be an economic development project and recommends that a letter of support be submitted by the Director of Public Service and Safety for the C1 liquor permit, Trex, application as requested by SNG Stores LLC for their marathon station at 801 West Main Street. This is not a matter of legislation. This committee asks that this recommendation to support the Trex application be accepted by councils so that a letter can be provided to be included in the application that the applicant will submit to the Division of Liquor Control. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair. And at this point, I move that the recommendation of the Law and Ordinance Committee be approved and the Director of Public Service and Safety submit a letter of support for the C1 Trex liquor permit application as requested by SNG Stores for their LLC marathon station at 801 West Main Street.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Severt to submit a letter of support for the C1 Trex liquor permit application. Is there any discussion from Council? Questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Do any committees have any further reports this evening? We'll now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Place Street, Troy, Ohio. First thing I'd like to say, Madam President, is I wish you would teach these people how to use their microphones so we could hear them in here. I don't even know if you guys can hear each other. It is hard to hear out there if they don't pull the microphones up and use them, or even turn them on. Secondly, I'd like to know what are the boundaries for this CRA 2 right now? I mean, what are the boundaries that you're going for? And I, I mean, I'm like a, most citizens in Troy, we don't understand what the heck's going on here and what this encumbers.
With the passage of CRA Number 2, the entire community would be eligible for a Community Reinvestment Area project. It's basically corporate line to corporate line.
Or corporation to corporation, so that the whole city then is involved in. Now, is this mandatory that people do this?
No, not at all.
Is there any in the future that you're going to try to use this some way to make people upgrade their homes and properties and stuff?
No, but when, you know, when there are property maintenance issues that come up, that is one of the things that we will let people know that they could possibly be eligible for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience at this point? We'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R38-2019.
Resolution number R38-2019, Resolution Amending the Community Reinvestment Area Program Guidelines and Amending the Boundary of Community Reinvestment Area Number 2. The boundary will be all of the city limits of the city of Troy, with the exception of that in CRA 1. First reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move to suspend.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from Council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We have no ordinances tonight. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mary Bemis, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a couple. One, thank you for all the participations. Past weekend was a busy weekend. Obviously, this weekend is another one with the Tour de Donut, and many of us are participating in that event as well. But I would be remiss if I didn't also encourage people to attend. The Air Force Band of Flight is coming on Sunday night. This is after the Tour de Donut weekend, but Sunday night at the Treasure Island Park, the Air Force Band of Flight will be performing at 7 o'clock. And just since we don't meet again until after Labor Day, you know that on Labor Day, our Troy Civic Band is also having their final concert at the Treasure Island Amphitheater, and that too will be at 7 o'clock. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows those two additional events are taking place this weekend and then the following, Labor Day weekend. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Council members this evening? Mr. Kendall?
May. In addition to the Tour de Donut, there's also another event this weekend going on at the same time, and it's the Donut Dash, which benefits Be the Match, which is an organization that supports bloodborne cancer. So, if you don't want to ride bikes, you can walk or run. It starts at the same time and will be on Crowdy Plaza, that you could register there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Twist?
Just encourage all citizens to be aware as school starts this week, just as buses and children are walking to school, just that everybody needs to be a little more careful and cautious and looking out for our kids as they start school.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there any comments from city staff this evening? Any questions from anyone in the audience?
Hi there, my name is Deborah Pike. I live at 412 Ella Street, Troy, Ohio. I attended yesterday's open house about Duke Park. First of all, I would like to apologize to Mayor-Elected Robin Oud and Mr., I call him Mr. T. I talked really loud yesterday, my kids said, my hearing aid was broken, and I was, my kids said I was pretty screamin', so I wanted to apologize for-
Couldn't notice, no, not at all. You were fine.
So, number one, what I learned yesterday, Mr. T said the best thing to me is educate. You need to educate yourself if you're going to find out things. So, I decided to come here to the city meeting, City Council meeting, to help get myself educated. I know it's not always right, but I'm just going to talk my language. Okay, first of all, the Duke Park thing. I have talked to a few people, and we would like to know, which I'm talking for myself now, should I say, I would like to know why can there not be some kind of finance out there to let the city know, I mean, let the citizen knows how much you're going to spend on this, how much you're going to spend on this, and how much you're going to spend on that. Well, I was told yesterday it's because they don't know. They have to pay for a, gosh, what was it you called?
For the design.
For the design, yes. But how do you, how did everyone come up with this 1.2 million if you don't know what the rough ballpark is? And why can't that be released to the citizens?
There's not a 1.2 million, it's a 1.2 mil, which is a legal term for a percentage of your income. The project's a $12 million project, and the city's paying 8 million of that, and then they thought there was about a $4 million need based upon just past experiences and looking at what other people have done. I saw you there, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I do think that they-
Probably heard you.
That they-
I apologize.
No, I mean, I didn't, there, I was, actually, I was going to say something, and I was like, but I think we ended up with about 30 people, give or take, throughout the two hours that we were there. But the, to answer your question, I don't, I told some people this, and this was the best way that I think you can explain it. If you want to build a house, you got to go to the bank and get your money first and say, okay, this, now we can build a house. Once you know how much money you're going to have, then you can make some determinations. Do I want to put in a two-sink bathroom, or do I want to put in a one-sink bathroom? Do I want to put in a shower and a tub? And so, I think that's why people can't really give you a dollar figure as to holistically, holistically, we know that it should be around somewhere between 11 and 12 million dollars to put in seven baseball fields, three soccer fields, 491 parking spaces, three new entrances to the park, the recreational miniature golf course, a splash pad, a concession stand, a new bathroom deal, a new market building.
Correct, I got all that listed.
Yeah, so that's kind of where it came from, but, I mean, as far as itemization that we can say, okay, this is what this particular thing is going to cost, or this is what this particular thing is going to cost, I don't think we can do that with any certainty at this time, and I think that's the best way to kind of explain that, at least from my perspective, that's the best way. That's how I explained it to a lot of people yesterday, is we, holistically, we don't know we need, we need the money, and you saw all the pictures of the different splash pads, just to show the splash pads. You know, they could range in price from, you know, a couple million dollars to, you know, Greenville just put in one that was- You know, they could range in price from, you know, a couple million dollars to, you know, Greenville just put in one that was probably significantly less based upon the size and scope and, and the features that are in there. So, um, that's, I don't know if that, you're looking like that's how to answer your question, but that's the best answer I can give you.
How did you guys come up with this? I mean, how did you know, oh, this is going to cost us at least eight million? Oh, we need to go to the citizens and get this up for. How did you guys come up with that number?
There were some, there were some existing estimates from where this has been looked at in the past and other people have looked at stuff. We know, for instance, what Saint Mary's paid for a recreational golf course. We can look and see what Huber paid for a splash pad. And so, we, we can kind of ballpark, which is all readily available, I mean, it's all public record. It'd be stuff you guys could find too, but it's,
I can't find it online.
No, I mean, the, the, like you, I mean, you could look and see what Huber paid for their splash pad. I don't know what it was, per se, I, you know.
But why can't that be shared with the citizens?
Well, I, I don't know that anyone's trying to hide it, it's just,
No one's saying you're hiding it, I'm just saying, no one tells us how much you're going to spend.
We're going to spend twelve,
To me, it feels like we're saying, we want to do this, so you're going to give us the money.
No, we're going to spend twelve million dollars.
Right, but you're asking us to pay you for the rest.
No, 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 we're, we're going to spend, the city's going to spend eight, we're, we're asking the citizens to contribute four.
So why don't you ask for less? I mean, you know, we, we can't live above our means because, you know, I want to redo my house, I want to do that. That'd be like me coming up and saying, hey, I want to do this, so give me the money first before I decide what to do.
Yeah, I, I'm not here,
That's how I feel.
To answer that question, this, it's just like, like I said, if you go to the bank to get a loan for a house, you know about what you're going to do. We, we, we know that these things are going to be around twelve million dollars. We might have a little bit access, because we've done it. They've looked at estimates, they've looked at other communities that have done similar things. They've looked at what baseball fields cost, you, you know, it's an, it's an amazing, uh, process when you look and see what just running electric costs to put up lights, to put up, uh,
Electric for the cellar houses.
There, so, so that, you know, I, that's the answer, ma'am, that's, we don't, we came up with a, a twelve million dollar budget holistically for the, for the park process.
Okay. Once we get to design, Deb, that will all be laid out.
But that will be after we give you the one point mil.
Right, right now, it's an estimate, it's an estimate based on some things that other communities have done. So we're saying, this is what we think we're going to spend, we can do it within this parameter. And then, once we have the communities, okay, then we move to design and then we can say, okay, this is what we're looking at and this is what this part of the project is going to cost and this is what this is going to cost and this is what this is going to cost. Right now, it's just, pardon the pun, it's a ballpark figure.
Right.
And, and we'll look for community involvement once we get to that design phase too. For example, I, I don't know who was with me, but yesterday, we never even thought of this, but the guy from Troy Junior Baseball said, when you build your bathrooms, have the urinals go all the way down to the floor.
Right.
Now, I would not, I would tell you straight out, that thought would never have occurred to me until he told us that you need to do that for the T-ball kids because the, the little kids
Yeah.
Can't, can't make that. So, we, we, we're going to look for input like that on, when it comes to design from, you know, what makes sense and what, uh, you know, we're, that's, that's the kind of stuff, once, if the levy gets passed, that's, that's the, the next stage would be, what do you guys want to see, what, what do you want to see your splash pad look like, what do you want to see, uh, these things look like? So, eh, there will be a, a second aspect to this like Robin just said.
But the problem is, is the parks that is in the community is not getting nothing done to them. You, I know, I'm from the, what was it called, the experience side of town? From the East End, I have lived there all of my life. Love my neighborhood. But you can't even take your children or your grandkids to Boyers Field, the big running place. There's nothing there but a ballpark and some stuff, some swings and things. Then you have Herlinger over here that has been there. The experience side of town started the two parks. So why can't we even have a toilet for those kids? You take my granddaughter down to Boyers Field and there's little kids and men sitting over there peeing all, in the woods. I don't want my grandchildren to see that. So why can't you guys just maybe cut it back a little bit and put in some toilets to places? That does, King's, King's Chapel, got a park, boom, we got a restroom. To the East End of Troy, we feel like you guys have forgot us. And we do. Would you want to take your granddaughter to somewhere and watch men sitting there and peeing in the woods? No. Used to be able to walk my daughter, my granddaughter down to the park, Dairy Queen on the way on Union Street, go over and have lunch. What do you see, people peeing all over the place? That's not cool. People playing basketball down there, what are they good when they have to? They just whip it out and go. Would any of you guys want to see your kids do that? No, I don't think so. So why can't the city of Troy do something for the East End of Troy? We're not a bad neighborhood, we're just a little ran down because we was there first. So why can't y'all help us do that? The kids would love it. I personally, these, this lady that goes around and tells us what is wrong with our places, I understand. I try in hard to get mine back up to standard after five years. I'm able to do a little here and there. So I go out there and I trim and I mow and I paint and I have a house sitting over here that's been empty for a year and a half. Guess what's living there now? Groundhogs. Guess what's coming over in my yard, eating my flowers, eating my wood off of the shed to get underneath there? Groundhogs. I called about trying to get rid of them, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Twelve gauge will take care of that, but you can't shoot guns in the city of Troy. But you know, if no one's doing anything here with the wild animals, skunks, rabbits and everything's living underneath that house that's been there for a year and a half empty. I have to fight the animals. So I can't go paint my front porch because I've got to go back here and figure out how to get rid of these groundhogs and skunks. So I just think it's time, you guys, you know, city of Troy, I love the city. I have always, not always, but I've always came back to my simple little town. I don't want to see it look like Dayton. I don't want to be from Dayton. I want to keep it simple, little, and I just think you guys need to go across the tracks and not just to Dad's Saltchucks, on down and see what we put up with in this East End of town, standing there watching men peeing in the woods. So, you know, something's got to be done, I'm sorry. It's not right. That's, the East End has got a bad name because we're old. I try my best to help my neighbors keep their places looking good because I don't want to see trash. I'm very upset with the way that my house looks now, but I'm working, a little at a time. But now, I can't get help to fix my house because now the levy's coming in and then you got the school levy. I live on a budget, yes. And I know it's no one's fault but mine, but I do have to live on that budget. So, we just need some help from our councilmen to help us get the East End of Troy straightened up a little bit. Help these people, don't dog us. Because I've so many people, well, I wouldn't go across the tracks. There's nothing wrong with the East End. I take my neighborhood against any of your neighborhoods any day. Because nothing is wrong with the east side of Troy. And now everything going that way. We want to go to a park, we go to the city park because we don't have no bathrooms. But we've had those two parks there forever. Okay, I just need help. I don't know who to talk to, I don't know who to go to about anything that I have concern about.
Mrs. Pike?
Ma'am, excuse me.
Is it, is it Mrs. Pike, am I right there?
Yes. Excuse me?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, please. As far as the property next door to you that has been vacant for a year and a half, after the meeting, if you would please stop and see Mrs. Knight and give her that address, then the city can check on that and our property maintenance department can check on that and see if something can be done about that.
I didn't even know that, so, thank you.
Right. And anytime that you have a concern, you are welcome to call the city offices and let them know that there's an issue, a problem and they, you know, will be happy to try to help you resolve that problem.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Schwizer, your turn. No, that's all right.
Um, if you could leave your phone number with Mrs. Knight also, I will give you a call later.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then also, I would like to know, who do I go to to talk about weeds along the curb?
The same, the same thing, just let her know, you know, what street or where it is.
Because my water is puddled in front of my house because no one cleans their gutters but me and I do my next door neighbors too. And it all just kind of stays right here. Okay, thank you very much for your time and educate me.
Thank you for letting us know, thank you.
Little crowd, but a lot of noise. I don't know who to ask, whether it be the mayor or Mr. Titherton, this is, uh, has to do with funerals. When did we stop having police escorts or whatever for funerals?
We still do that.
We normally get a call from the funeral home? We normally get a call from the funeral home requesting that assistance, if they don't call us, then we don't respond.
Okay, I, I was at a family member's funeral this, uh, Saturday and I noticed there wasn't any police escort. And, uh, so I'll have to talk to the funeral director and ask him why he didn't ask for it. Because, uh, without a police escort, the people seem like, uh, they don't even know what them little blue flags on the top of a car mean. Very disrespectful community or, or world that we're in now, they only care about themselves. They're in a hurry to get to know where. So, you know, I, I didn't know if, uh, it was something that had stopped because of finances or, but now since you explained it, the funeral director has to make the calls for a police escort. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments this evening? We have a presentation this evening from Mr. Joseph Graves, President of the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce and Chief Executive Officer of the Troy Development Council. And he will provide an update on the Troy Development Council. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for the time to present to you all tonight. Believe it or not, it's been about nine months since I was in front of you as the new CEO of the Troy Development Council. I weighed twenty pounds less and had a lot more hair then too, so. Okay, over these past nine months, uh, I have had the opportunity to spend one-on-one time with many of you all. I still have to make my way to see some of you all. Uh, I've had the chance to meet with Mayor-Elected Robin Ode, Mayor Beamish, I meet with Patrick every week. And unfortunately for Councilman Phillips, he got to experience my horrible golf skills in person. So, um, as soon as I got here in two thousand eighteen, uh, I met with the Board of Directors of the Troy Development Council and I had them come up with a list of goals and objectives for the organization for two thousand nineteen. And I believe we have, we're working on all those goals and, and quite well, I believe. First one was to continue to work closely with the Troy, City of Troy Economic Development Department on a robust business retention and expansion program. For those who don't know, eighty percent of all your new jobs come from existing industry. So we need to meet with these industries regularly. Uh, over the past nine months, I have met with seventeen industries. Five of those, CFP, I've met with three times, Conagra twice, Honda America twice, Honda Logistics twice, Raymeth twice, Stillwater Technologies, Brock Air Products, Crown, Vision Manufacturing, Hobart, Shooting and Machine and Design, Canyon Run Engineering, Avenue Distribution, Cigna, Collins Aerospace, Clopay, EcoTech, and I believe I have it all. So, um, I met with all those and have, uh, introduced myself to all those industries. Uh, I am on a schedule now to meet with six industries a month. Uh, and I can, uh, certainly meet with Patrick and the Economic Development Department every week and share those visits, whatever, whatever information I have found out in those visits, I share with Patrick and the Economic Development Staff. Uh, plus, uh, during that time, I took a, a trip to Japan to meet with our Japanese-owned companies and to celebrate our relationship with our sister city, Takahashi. Uh, these Japanese companies could ever, could have located anywhere, but they chose to locate in Troy, Ohio and have created thousands of family-supporting jobs. Uh, we need to nurture those relationships as they are mutually beneficial to both, the company and the city of Troy. Number two was to develop a workforce attraction and development plan utilizing social media by collaborating with the city of Troy's quality of life and capital investment initiatives. So as many of you all know, workforce is the number one issue with our industries today. Lack of or, uh, lack of, lack of skilled, uh, lack of a skilled workforce. So, we have heard many, time to time again from our employers that any employees, well, we have heard those, those, uh, those screams, really. So within the past two weeks, the TDC has designed a landing page, maketroyohioyours.com, see how I did that? For our social media campaign designed to reach those affected by downsizes, closures in our region to share with them the high quality of life in Troy and the career opportunities in Troy through yourcareerconnect.com, our job posting website for Troy and Miami County. This website has been up and running for nine days and three hundred people in the area of, um, what's the city with the closure, GM closure?
Maureen.
Maureen.
Lordstown?
Lordstown.
Lordstown, yes, I missed the other nail, sorry. So we, we're targeting areas that have announced closures that have skills that are, that our employers are looking for. Uh, so within the past nine days, three hundred potential candidates have, from Lordstown, have visited the site. Along with the job fairs, the TDC sponsors throughout Miami County at high schools and Edison State. In September, we will be sponsoring a made in Miami County event for eighth graders. Economic development is very competitive. It's, we're now, we're competing against all the communities in, not only in Ohio, or in the region, Ohio, the Midwest, we're competing against countries all, or cities all over the world. And psych consultants have been known to look at third grade reading comprehension levels because they want to know they're going to have a workforce in ten years. So we have to reach the future workforce younger and younger all the time. Uh, so right now, we anticipate over six hundred eighth graders and approximately thirty employers to attend the event. And this event will be more hands-on. They'll actually be laying the bricks, learning how to lay bricks, working, uh, robots with their own hands. It's more hands-on, uh, hopefully to attract them to a career in the, in the skilled trades. In May, we, uh, hosted a housing symposium, very well-attended. There are several issues that our, our, our industries are experiencing, workforce or lack of, housing, transportation, childcare. And May was the housing symposium, well-attended. Uh, we are working to do a transportation symposium because we do have an issue there as well. Uh, number three was to continue to partner with and establish relationships with Miami County and other economic development organizations to accomplish the economic development goals of Troy, Ohio. And number four was the focus And number four was the focus on the recruitment of new industry. So, just this past week, I signed a contract with Marketing Alliance to start designing a new Troy Development Council website. So why is a website important? Well, a website is our front door to the world, and ours hasn't been renovated for six years. Also, our case, a website is the first impression of our community for site consultants. Those who make million-dollar decisions where companies locate and create jobs, our current website does not easily address the answers site consultants search for. Initial site consultants, site searches conducted by site consultants are done online at a rate of 90%. So, we may be being considered for a project, we may never know it, and we're eliminated because we don't have the information that they're searching for. So, we have to make sure that information is readily available to site consultants. I have also worked very hard to reestablish a good working relationship with the Dayton Development Coalition, our regional connection with Jobs Ohio, our electric partners, our gas partners. Also, in early May, I, along with Dayton Development Coalition, visited five site consultants in Chicago, was able to talk about the job opportunities in Troy, Ohio. As you know, one of our local industries, Avenue, at the Avenue Distribution Center has announced their closure. This closure is a direct correlation to consumers shopping online and not shopping Avenue-branded stores. They have closed 200 stores around the region. The Troy Development Council will diligently be working with the economic development officials at the city to fill this building. Along with the city's Economic Development Department, we have been in contact already with the building owner to get more information on the building, to market the building. Actually, just this past week, we submitted the building for a project. On the other hand, several local industries have announced expansions. Conagra, Canyon Run, Brock Air Products, EcoTech, and some of the other industries have discussed the possibility of expanding further in the future. Another program we're looking at doing in the future is, the board and I have discussed the process and the need of certifying industrial sites. That's a program through Jobs Ohio. Site consultants are in the business of eliminating communities and running for a project, so we must do all we can to alleviate any doubt or any concern, and that Troy, and make sure they know that Troy, Ohio is the place to do business. The certification process consists of conducting a Phase 1 environmental, flood studies, archaeological studies, geotechnical work, and many, many other studies for a folder about that thick of information. So, site consultants can help, a certification can help site consultants pull the trigger on a community, because their client is the company, it's not the community. So, their goal is for their client to be up and running as quickly as possible, making money as quickly as possible. So, we have to alleviate all their concerns. So, over the past nine months, I have recruited three new private sector financial supporters to the TDC, and I continued talks with a couple of additional potential supporters. It is my goal for the Troy Development Council to be the go-to economic development organization in Troy, Ohio. With increased private sector support and the continued support of the City of Troy, I believe we can achieve that goal. Also, as President of the Chamber of Commerce, I would be remiss if I did not remind you that this Thursday is our annual steak fry and auction, so if you haven't purchased tickets yet, let us know. So, I'll open it up to any kind of questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Anyone have any questions or comments? I just have one observation.
Yes.
I accidentally found maketroyohioyours, just within the past weekend, I didn't know it was out there, and I came across it. I started doing some searching at the site to try to find out who put that up there and where. And I had difficulty finding that it was Troy Development Council, or that it was the Troy Chamber, or that it was just someone from the outside. And I would just, I don't know if that's on purpose, or if that's just kind of an oversight, because sometimes when we're developing these things, we know it, but the outside world doesn't.
Our true purpose is for them to visit Troy, or yourcareerconnect.com for the job listings. So, that's the goal, is just kinda tease them with the quality of life features that we have on there, get them to go to Your Career Connect and visit, and Your Career Connect, it's very, it's there that we are responsible for that site. So, it was purposely done that way.
Okay, okay. Because I kinda looked at it and I thought, who's doing this? And, you know, what's, so, thank you.
It was just a teaser.
Yeah, okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Letts.
Mr. Graves, with the symposiums that you're having
Yes.
Particularly on housing and transportation and childcare, are there gonna be any policies that the city will be asked to adopt, or state policies that will be, that will be put forward to try to change things? And if there are, do we have an idea of what those will be?
The Troy Development Council, along with Troy Chamber of Commerce, Pickle Chamber of Commerce, Tip City Chamber of Commerce, and Miami County Economic Development, put these, this, the housing symposium and future symposiums together in the future. We are meeting next week to talk about the follow-up to the housing symposium, and also start the planning for the transportation symposium. So, ask me in a couple of weeks, and I'll probably be able to answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
You attended the housing symposium, did you feel that was good information, not?
To be frank, it was things I already knew, and I've already heard from other people.
Right. We had, we had heard two different things, where what industries were wanting to have happen in the community, and then we heard the builders, why the builders are building a certain product. So, really, the goal was to get them into a room, to hear both sides of the stories, so they wouldn't be any kinda, you know, they would have the information straight from the source. That was the goal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week.